Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's so good to see you all today, and anyone at home, hello, welcome. As soon as we get a little more settled, we'll start. Hello.
Hi.
Hello, Margaret.
Big class.
Must be a good teacher.
I know.
Just very popular.
So fun to be in person. So, um, let's see, should we go ahead and introduce ourselves, or start with a prayer?
Yeah, start with a prayer, and then introduce, yeah.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we pray to you for your faithfulness to us. As we study today, help us to learn more about the free life we have in you. Reveal to us the ways in which you are calling us to follow you and live in the freedom you have given us. In Jesus' name we pray. Okay, so on chapter two, ransom, Jesus sets you free.
Oh, we're gonna do introductions?
Oh, yes, that's right.
Well, you said...
Oh, I did, I did. Okay, so I'm Mickey Rockhold.
I'm Lou Lander.
All right, Lander.
Tori Hines.
Jeanne Anderson.
Andrea Frye.
Stan Jacobson.
Wait, Nancy Jacobson.
Susan Bishop.
John Treeburn.
I'm John Richardson.
Tom McColl.
Oh, in that hall, yeah.
Yes. Welcome, welcome, welcome. All right, so, um, I was so glad last week that Stan, you had talked about how these different facets and understandings of the cross are not a theory, they're not theories, but they are just different facets. Do you want to explain that again?
Well, they are called theories by a lot of different people. I guess I, I look at them, because they're all based on Scripture, I don't look at that as a theory. So, I look at them just as different aspects of what God has accomplished in the cross. But, words are hard. Whether you call them a theory or not, that's fine, sometimes I do too.
Views, different views.
Different views.
So, so are you saying you don't have to select one of these and embrace it?
Oh, no, this is, I think all of them are part of what God has done.
I think, though, we probably operate out of, we might operate more out of one kind of mode, or try to mold things into a particular mold, I suppose, that's what I think at least. So if you listen to our preaching, you could try to guess and see where we come from.
So, what is this understanding, what is ransom and atonement? If we look at page 26 in our books. Near the bottom of that page, the third paragraph down, well, before that, the author is talking about different children's games, where kids take one another captive and they get set free. Children's games. And then captivity is no fun, even in the children's game. Would anyone like to read out loud for us that last paragraph starts with one biblical view?
One biblical view of what Jesus accomplished on the cross is built on the idea that sin has held us hostage, imprisoned us by a captor who is beyond our control. That sin binds our abilities to live the free and forgiven life that God intends for us. We are prisoners of the forces of evil and wickedness, and there is no hope for escape on our own efforts. In this view, Jesus saves us by giving his life on the cross as a ransom to set us free.
Thank you. So, a little more about that is on page 41. There we've got the ransom, atonement, and summary, definition of sin and salvation. So, anyone would like to read the definitions of sin and salvation from page 41?
Sin brings punishment, preventing us from living the kind of life that God intends for us to love. Deficiency and salvation. Jesus first pays our sins and sets us free. Forgiveness and captivity, he wants us to live in freedom and joy.
Thank you, John. So as we begin to study this chapter, how do you respond to the idea that Jesus has set you free? You feel the need to be set free at times?
I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think, I'll just move so I can...
We're probably on our mask. Okay, I'll try, yeah. Okay, so, I have a soft voice, and then in the mouth, it's my feeling. As we begin to study this chapter of ransom and atonement, how do you respond to the idea that Jesus has set you free? Do you feel the need to be set free now or at other times?
I always like that, I feel that Jesus saved us from the law. And I feel that, you know, sometimes it's hard to remember that we are freed from being enslaved to, you must, you must, you must, you can't, you can't, you can't, no, we have a Savior who's gonna lead us and guide us and comfort us. It's just, yeah.
Well, and offers us salvation, even though we still have sinned and fall short, we can be assured that it's going to be forgiven.
Yeah, forgiveness is what I think about, you know, the feeling that even though, you know, you do come short, you don't have to beat yourself on the back forever that God will forgive you.
Right, I, you know, I sort of see the first chapter from last week and this chapter as sort of continuations on. They're not, so I was curious to hear someone say that they're different viewpoints. To me, it kind of builds on one, Jesus died for our sins, and you sort of met the requirement that God needed to be met. And then, now, however, we, we're humans, and so, we have sin. And it's like, as much as we try to do right, we fall short. It's as much as we, you know, try to do those things, you know, excepting that, that Episcopal liturgy, even in ours perhaps, you know, forgive me for those things, Lord, that I did that I shouldn't have, those things that I didn't do, I'm sure that, you know, it's both, it's both those things, I feel. And that, to me, is what's so powerful about our faith, my faith, is that we have that personal relationship, moment by moment, with, with, who can set us free from our thinking that is so, can be so negative or so wrong, or so judgmental, or so whatever, and then, you know, I'm constantly, yeah, like, oh, thank you, God, please, you know, oh, yeah, here I am again, shoot! You know, I don't have to beat myself up like you were saying, for being here again. I don't know, that's just how I'm seeing it.
All right, so, I found page 27 kind of interesting. That first chapter, that, or heading is ransom, atonement, and the Bible in history. And that first paragraph on 27, anybody want to read that out loud?
About a hundred years after Jesus, a man named Irenaeus, Irenaeus, first began to think about the problem of the human condition as one of being held captive by sin and evil in the world. He was compelled by the imagery of captivity, and he gave his kidnapper a name, the apostate one, or the devil. Here is how he described the way the devil holds people captive in their sins.
Yeah. The apostate one. "Or the devil unjustly held sway over us, and though we were by nature the possession of Almighty God, we had been alienated from our proper nature, making us instead his own disciples." I think the devil's, is that what he's trying to say? "We were kidnapped or sent to dodgeball jail or put in the mush pot. We were enslaved in chains. We were stolen away from the kind of life we were created to live, swept away from the joy, peace, and love that was supposed to characterize our existence, and we could not escape on our own." So, I thought it was interesting, about a hundred years after, you know, how many years ago, about 2000? How many years ago is that? This man was thinking about it and did some writing about this. And then many centuries later, Thomas Cranmer, in the late 1400s, Archbishop of Canterbury, developed this image further, describing Christ's body and blood as the price that God had to negotiate with the devil. God had to negotiate with the devil, okay, in order, in full, in order to extract our freedom.
You know, I wonder, I wonder if there's some, just going off of what Jeanne was saying, you know, that substitution and ransom can be similar in a sense that Christ, you know, they all are, right? That Christ offers something, you know, on our behalf or for us. But with ransom, the particular thing is that it's owed to the devil. And whereas substitution, it's maybe more, in a way, I don't know if you'd say it's, if it's necessarily owed to God, or if it's sort of, it's, but it's to settle justice, an act that needs to happen. And so, Christ offers himself. So, maybe the particular element of ransom that I think about is, so there's a lot that it's like, oh, yeah, but then, then the part that's more of a sticking point for me is that, wait a minute, God has to negotiate with the devil?
Yeah.
How does that, how does that work exactly? Yeah, so, I'm just...
Yeah, because I think of him as so omnipotent that that would not have to happen.
Oh, I may be going somewhere you don't want me to go.
It's free, free form.
Yeah, sin is separation from God. It is our faith and our belief in the atonement, the ransom of Jesus that brings us back to God.
Right, and he establishes our relationship with him, right?
Yeah.
But I guess I haven't seen that, that quite so clearly or distinctly that God had to, has to negotiate moment by moment, in a sense, with the devil. Yeah, that, that to me is a scary concept.
I mean, again, because all have roots in Scripture, and so it's not like, you know, but it's, that's the, that's a challenging part for, you know, challenging part for me. So it's not so much that something's owed, it's a matter of how, you know, where's it go? Where are some, like, Jack? You know what I mean? And, but, there's, you know, to defend, I guess, ransom a little bit, if you think about when Christ, you know, dies, where does he go?
Missed by that, to hell.
Well, he descended to hell, right? Yeah, the third day, he rose, he rose again, so, anyway.
But wasn't that, yeah, wasn't that to bring those people who were dead with him?
Well, there's some of that too. And dodgeball again, I mean, there's, that, there's, there's some of that in Scripture as well, yeah.
I'm not sure where that ransom is paid, but what I think of is, Paul in Romans 7 says that, "I want to do right, but I can't." And sin is looked at not simply by the things we do or don't do, say or don't say, think or don't think, but sin is looked at as a power that is controlling us. And that's, if there's anything about this ransom, I, I look at that as one of the positives, that it breaks that power, wherever he has to pay it, I don't know, but it breaks the power that is at work within us to control us. So it isn't simply that I choose always to sin, but in fact, there's a power that pushes me. I don't want to say the devil made me do it, but in a sense, the power of sin within me makes me do it.
That's a fine line, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it really is.
You can use it as an excuse, right?
Sure.
But then, you know, the personal responsibility aspect of it also is front and center. For me, I, to me, it's an easy concept, the, the, well, it's, it's central to our faith that Jesus died in our place, and that, for me, the struggle comes, okay, what now? And when you hear kind of where this text is going, and a lot of what you read in the Bible, it appears that there should be a change, and I, for one, struggle with that. I have things that I do on a daily basis, I guarantee, before I get out of this door today, I will have sin in thought. I will, because it happens every week, and I, you know, the, the, the base human nature that I have is, you know, I get angry. I think horrible things as a result of that anger, and then I have to challenge it, of course. But, you know, when I read something like Hebrews 10 verses 29 through 32, or, you know, do you mind? Why is this, yeah? "For if we willfully persist in sin, after having received the knowledge of the truth, there is, there no longer remains a sacrifice for sinners, but a fearful prospect of judgment and a theory of fire that will consume the adversaries. Anyone who has violated the law of Moses dies without mercy on the testimony of two or three witnesses." Can have that in my like he's. "How much worse punishment do you think will be deserved by those who have spurned the Son of God, profaned the blood of the covenant by which they were sanctified, and outraged the spirit of grace? For we know the one who said, vengeance is mine, I will repay, and again, the Lord will judge his people. It is a fearful thing to fall into the hands of the living God." And, to me, this is the other side of the equation. This is, you know, if, if there isn't a change, if there isn't a recognition that we are saved, and that there's an allegiance owed because of that, and how... We know that we get pulled over by the cops if we go over five miles over the speed limit. One mile over the speed limit is breaking the law, but we know we can face that. Where's the speed limit here? And I'm not asking the question to know how much I can push the envelope. I'm asking the question, as, you know, we often hear that this is absolute, that salvation is ours, it's given freely, and yet, we also see kind of the guardrails of this as, yeah, but if you don't at least accept responsibility for your, your own actions, that there seems to be another side of this, that all of a sudden, you know, as Pastor Ted Matty said in one of his last sermons, "At some point, your father will no longer listen to you." That's what concerns me, and I want, I want to hear your feedback on that. I want to hear that I'm wrong, that salvation is absolute, and yes, I will make mistakes, and I'll try to change, but when I think of my, you know, the sermon on the mount, I raised that last week, that even thought of doing bad, or doing illicit, or doing wrong, isn't in itself a sin, a violation of law. Now, if we are no longer under the law, then at what point, I don't know, I've gone on too long. I have doubts, but I have an issue with this, clearly.
But I think it's okay to have doubts, just as Abram in the, in the Scripture today, have a little doubt, you know, how's this even possible to question God? I think it's all right, God didn't like slamming down, how dare you question me? He, He worked with it. And I think what you're alluding to, Bruce, is that if we're continuing bad behavior or wrong behavior, sinful ways, why are we doing that? Why aren't we taking that to prayer? Why aren't we working on that with others in our faith community to overcome it?
One of the things to it, reading in this chapter, and about song, and although I don't sing, what I read was that the songs put positive thoughts. You know, they place, they replace the negative, the guilt, the, the, why do I do this kind of thing, with uplifting, positive messages for God. And so it's kind of up to you to say, wow, I'm being wound down. And need to, I don't know, go to your townhouse. Go to the mush pot.
You realize she's gonna say that to me now.
Yeah, I think there are sections of Scripture like that, that are just really hard, and they're hard for me to understand how that fits in with breaks. And I can only understand it, while I can't understand those Scriptures. Okay, I just put it that way, I don't understand that. But, if I understand that my salvation has anything to do with what I do, then Jesus didn't have to die. His death is worthless. If it has to do with something that I have to do, then he, then his death is worthless. His death is enough. That's, that's where I fall down, and that's where I lay my, everything that I have on. If, if he isn't enough, then I'm sure not going to be enough. So that's where I come down. But I don't understand those Scriptures either, I just don't.
Then what do you strive to be?
Striving is a different issue, and growing is a different issue. Of course I want to grow. I want to grow because of what Christ has done. And that's a different issue than my salvation. My salvation is dependent on whether I grow or not. If that's the case, then again, Christ didn't have to die. It just depends on me. Yeah, I want to grow, but only because of what Christ has done.
There's also that aspect to the, he sees our heart. You know, and, you know, because we can't, we can't do it, but if we admit them, we're screwed up again. You know, he sees our heart. That's where I, hold on.
Bruce, I think you quoted Pastor Matty, that he said that he, that God would not, would stop listening to us? I have a problem with that.
Well, I should qualify that, that's unfair to him, because it was, it was very rooted in a context in which he was saying that.
Okay.
But I felt a link to the concern I raised here with that sermon. And I think it was, it was, you know, kind of specific to that passage, which was, you know, kind of an unwillingness to even recognize sin and just continue to indulge in it, which, I don't know, I just, I just, I see a lot of good people in this church, and I see, I guess I'm frustrated with the lack of change in my life, that I have to bring back to myself. So, and yet, and I appreciate what you had to say, that, that it's, there's no link between that and salvation. That salvation is beyond my control, and it's already done.
And as long as I keep looking at the good people, I don't know any people who are good in that sense of perfect.
In human terms, not in...
Even in what they do, I mean, I don't. And I don't think we're ever called to look at other people. We're always called, look at Jesus, look at Him. I think, once we begin, and I'm sorry, I said too much, I can kill. Once we begin to look at what other people do, that's a trap. I think that's a trap to save.
That's a way to be held captive, right?
Yeah, it is a way. Like Romans 7, and the end of Romans 7 is powerful for me, because Paul ends up saying, "I'm captive to sin, but thanks be to God in Jesus Christ." He goes back and he says, "Thanks be to God in Jesus Christ." That's my paraphrase. I forgot my glasses, these fall down all the time, so I had trouble.
Would you like someone else to read that?
That's close enough, I think that's what it's saying, it's very close.
I think also, in, on page 28 of our book, there's verses from Galatians. Now, before faith came, and this is talking about, now before faith came, "We were imprisoned and guarded under the law until faith would be revealed. Therefore, the law was our disciplinarian until Christ came, so that we might be justified by faith. But now that faith has come, we are no longer subject to a disciplinarian. For in Jesus Christ, we are all children of God through faith." So, kind of moving away from the Old Testament, you must do things this way, the law, right? And so, as we've been discussing, the idea of ransom, and this is on page 31 in the book, "The idea of ransom or release of those who are captive has certainly shaken up systems of cultural and political and economic oppression. It's also powerful on a personal level. Many have drawn strength from this understanding of Jesus's death, after identifying the many ways that they feel held hostage by forces beyond their control." So Paul, the Apostle Paul, often used the imagery of chains to describe not just his own physical imprisonment, but the bondage of sin that holds us hostage, I'm just discussing that. So let's take a look at John 8, 31 through 36.
Then Jesus said to the Jews who had believed in Him. If I got the right chapters and dates?
31 through 36.
Yeah, okay. "Then Jesus said to the Jews who had believed in Him, 'If you continue in my word, you are truly my disciples, and you will know the truth, and the truth will make you free.' They answered him, 'We are descendants of Abraham and have never been slaves to anyone. What do you mean by saying you will be made free?' Jesus answered them, 'Very truly I tell you, everyone who commits sin...'" Jesus answered, answered them, very truly I tell you, everyone who commits sin is a slave to sin. The slave does not have a permanent place in a household. The son has a place there forever. So if the son makes you free, you will be free indeed. I know that you are descendants of Abraham, yet you look for an opportunity to kill me because there is no place to you for my word.
Is that, how far?
Oh, three thirty-six.
Oh, I overdid it.
Would you read just verse thirty-six again, please?
Sure. So if the son makes you free, you will be free indeed.
Thank you. So, our author of our book here writes that shame and guilt are among the Christians' deadliest enemies. Yeah, so what purpose do shame and guilt serve in our lives and in our Christianity?
First of all, it's recognition of not having behaved or acted according to our Christian faith or Jesus's way.
It causes us to sin again because we're not trusting. Trusting, trusting God when so that's a sin in itself.
And it also holds us captive, right?
I'm kind of thinking what do non-believers do with their shame and guilt? And I'm thinking they just carry that anchor around. So with repeated behavior, at no hope at all, just like, why can't I fix this?
And punish ourselves. Which comes down to all kinds of ugly things.
And I think some people may not even feel it, depending on the circumstance, you know, for the actions that we're seeing in the world. I don't know that they really feel guilty.
I was going to be quiet. Somebody has to tell me to shut up sometimes. Okay, it's okay. I don't think shame has any place in the Christian faith at all. That, I think that is a work of the devil. Guilt, though, I think guilt causes us to, to look to Jesus. Guilt is not a bad thing. It's a bad thing when we hold on to it and don't trust that Christ has died for us. Guilt is not, not a bad thing, if it drives us to Jesus. If we hold on to it, that's a different story.
Well, what's the difference between guilt and conscience then?
I, I, I guess, I might be wrong here. I, I would say guilt. That conscience is the way that we understand that we are guilty, that, that we have done something wrong. So I don't know if there's a huge difference between those two. Conscience is simply the, the means by which guilt comes to us. I, I don't know. I haven't thought that one through too closely.
He'll get back to you next week.
Different denominations go at this a little bit differently. I don't know what I have the idea of it. Catholics emphasize guilt a lot more than Protestant churches do.
Well, that's some people who go to confession.
But anyway, I, I just remember kind of where I doubt that from something.
I think there's a difference between older understandings of Catholicism and some of the new writers of Catholicism. I think there's just some differences there too, but even as there is in
Well, and on page twenty-nine, there was a section on different points of view. Let's see. George Johnson, former director of the World Hunger Program for the American Lutheran Church and author of Beyond Guilt and Powerlessness. I might want to read that one. Said that Luke four sixteen through thirty. And the image of salvation as being set free from captivity is the heart of the gospel for many Latin American countries. He reminds us that in this country, our favorite gospel in a nutshell, Bible verse is John three sixteen. For God so loved the world, he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish, but have everlasting life. He said that the ever, the ultimate goal for many Christians in America is eternal, everlasting life. It's such a popular image for salvation that we see John three sixteen inscribed everywhere, from T-shirts to stadium signs. But not so in many Latin American countries. There is not John three sixteen that summarizes salvation, but Luke four sixteen through thirty. Salvation in that context is about good news to the poor, released to the captives, recovery of sight to the blind, and freedom for those who are oppressed.
I really love this piece. Because it celebrates Jesus as revolutionary. And here we sit, free people in America with so much. And you think about other countries like Latin America, where, oh my gosh, there, what hope do they have? They have hope in Christ. That's their hope. It's, to me, very dramatic.
And the example at the bottom of page thirty. A child psychiatrist who had a conversation with a young girl who was part of a migrant farm worker family, remember? Yeah. He asked her to draw a picture of herself. She drew this boss man kind of over to the side, her family over here. And, and his arms were, he was looking up into the sky and the, and the question was, what's the boss man doing? And the little girl says, he's looking up for God. And when he asked her why, she said, he wants to make sure God is on his side. The minister says Jesus was on the side of the poor, so that could mean trouble for him, the boss man. He's trying to avoid that, getting himself on the wrong side of the Lord, because that can be big, big trouble. Think about what you said, Don, about different emphasis in different denominations and parts of the world there.
That's so true about the slave culture also in our own country. You know, the beautiful gospels they have and the stories that they took from the Bible that and God helping them.
So I have a little challenge for us. If everyone in this room can think of an area in your life where you've already experienced the freedom that Christ brings. See if you can identify an area in your life where you have already experienced the freedom that Christ brings.
Where me this past few years has been rather challenging. Lost my son to suicide in November of twenty sixteen. And lost my marriage in December of twenty twenty as part of that. And for me, the freedom is that neither of those events I had any effect on, that they did not, it was not anything I did or did not do. That, you know, for me, that, that's, Christ brought me through that and allowed me to see that, you know, there wasn't anything else I could have done. And as a young girl, there was times, well, not times, there was a long period of time where I was sexually abused. And that was not, there wasn't, it wasn't me. There, I have no responsibilities in those events. And so that freedom of knowing that God loves me, you know, that it wasn't anything that I did. So.
Freedom from guilt and shame. Thank you for sharing.
In two thousand and one, an anapologist gave me a death sentence. And I took that in stride, I think, because of my background beyond that.
And it's twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, here I am. I'm still here.
I would say I've been freed from resentment that I have toward my family, just.
Mine is peace. Lost both my parents and my brother and yeah, just just the peace and freedom and it's weird. Just like with this new job and working out it and and then I'm always got that self-doubt, you know, sometimes it's like you're supposed to take eight hours to do the job, not two hours to do the job. You know, and everyone's telling me, you know, slow down, take your time. I can't wait for Tuesday and Friday with the keys and then but yeah, it's for me, it's a lot of loneliness challenges. I'm always asking, am I good enough? You know, so that's just me.
To have that peace of the Lord, yeah.
John, I don't think it's just you in a sense, but I, if, if one word that would that I struggled with the most in my life is the word inadequate. Feeling that I just wasn't good enough.
Yeah.
Or inadequate.
Yeah.
Especially as a pastor. And I think in the last few years, God has been dealing with that. Now, totally conquered it? Maybe not. But in more ways than it used to be, and conquered it in more ways than it is.
So then there's this section in the book that you referred to, Lou, of music. I just love that part too, because I do turn to music when I need to uplift myself. You know, I have certain songs that I sing. That are very meaningful and, and important, so. Well, one that comes to me a lot is, is popularized by Enya, and it was How Can I Keep From Singing? You know that one? Do you have the song here too?
You know, when I, when I read that, I guess I always think closer water be worthy and I think that it just sort of fills the void.
And of course, Amazing Grace.
Another thing, interesting you bring that up. I have a perfume that I wear. And so when I put it on, I, you know, like I did this morning, I thought, wow. You know, it seems to go away quite quickly, but that's what my perfume was about.
Few months ago, I had to have an MRI done and I've never been afraid in there, even though I think most of us have a sense of being in a tomb, like we're in an MRI machine. But it got all done and the technician said, well, you did great. And I said, it wasn't really a problem. He said, I know, you kept singing Jesus Loves Me over and over and over. Didn't think he could hear.
My favorite is, I Surrender All. I feel as though I can't deal with everything. I just have to surrender.
My favorite is Come Holy Ghost.
So throughout the Bible, when people were being held captive, and this is on page thirty-three, thirty-four in our book. Throughout the Bible, when people were being held captive, they discovered music as a way of claiming their freedom. And when they were released from captivity, they could not help but raise their voice in jubilant song. So let's take a look at Acts sixteen. It's about Paul and Silas. Acts sixteen, verses sixteen through twenty-nine.
Acts sixteen what?
I'll read. One day as we were going to a place of prayer, we met a slave girl who had a spirit of divination. And brought her owners a great deal of money by fortune telling. Am I in the right place? Sixteen, right?
You are, you are.
Oh, okay. Oh, my gosh. While she followed Paul and she would cry out, these men are slaves of the Most High God, who proclaimed to you a way of salvation. She kept doing this for many days, but Paul, very much in one, he turned and said to the spirit, I order you in the name of Jesus Christ to come out of her. And it came out that very hour. Should I keep going? What am I going to?
To twenty-nine?
Oh, but when her owner saw that, their hope of making money was gone. They seized Paul and Silas and dragged them into the marketplace before the authorities. When they had brought them before the magistrates, they said, these men are disturbing our city. They are Jews and they are advocating customs that are not lawful for us as Romans to adopt or observe. The crowd joined in attacking them and the magistrates had stripped of their clothing and ordered them to be beaten with rods. After they had been given a severe flogging, they threw them into prison and ordered the jailer to keep them securely. Following these instructions, he put them in the innermost cell and fasted their feet in the stocks. About midnight, Paul and Silas were praying and singing hymns to God. And the prisoners were listening to them. Suddenly, there was an earthquake so violent that the foundations of the prison were shaken and immediately all the doors were opened. And everyone's chains were unfastened. When the jailer woke up and saw the prison doors wide open, he drew his sword and was about to kill himself since he supposed that the prisoners had escaped. But Paul shouted in a loud voice, do not harm yourself, for we are all here. The jailer called for lights and rushing in, he fell down trembling before Paul and Silas.
So, the power of our songs can be prayers to God, right? Singing prayers to God, right? And that was pretty powerful. Do you think that the earthquake would have come if they had not been singing their prayers to God?
But it'd be more powerful than that. I thought that the chains fell. I mean, the earthquake didn't cause that, you know. And that no one was hurt. And I had forgotten that they didn't run and escape. And I had forgotten that they didn't run and escape. I didn't remember that they stayed. Stayed and all the other prisoners did too. Wow. That's a powerful start.
Hope for the hopeless, the captive.
But there is great power in song.
Okay, we're just about at the end of our time together here today. I'm wondering if if anyone from our One Parish One Prisoner group is here today. John, John Taylor sent a message earlier this week saying that this chapter seems to really relate to what Opop is hoping to accomplish. Going captivity and giving them hope and.
And and a life after after prison.
Yeah, so just from our list of sample questions, let me check and see if there's anything we didn't really get to today. Questions. Understanding of the cross. Well, I guess just any ways anyone wants to share about how this study has grown or enriched your faith or anything about something that your efforts as a follower of Jesus might contribute to the liberation of people who live in economic, political, or cultural captivity. Any final thoughts?
You know, I'm just thinking when what captivity, I think a lot of people meet sometimes to social media. It's like, well, what's going on on Facebook, or you know, and stuff like that. I think there's different aspects in our lives that we need to break those chains to, or at least personally.
Yeah, I'm very aware of people trapped in poverty, and I mean trapped in poverty. And some of the entrapment is just because of financial illiteracy. They just don't know how to use money, how to manage it, how to budget, how to make good decisions. And so, yeah, they're kind of digging their own grave. And yet, you know, I've watched the news with the rising gas prices and people are tipping over the edge. Yeah, if you're living paycheck to paycheck, you're over the edge. So that's a captivity for sure.
I think the people of the Ukrainian have it about as bad as it gets right now. And the people of Russia for being like to.
It's tempting to feel hopeless for me, just to feel hopeless. What can I do to help these people, even a small family from my school right now? What can I do? And I guess I can find faith in God, find faith in God and send prayers.
So then I I see the and heard the plea for help for those people who are have been escaped into Poland and the need for them to have the basics. And they're, you know, to find a trustworthy financial organization that will get as much help there. I would think that with a cross or, you know, one of those kinds of things that to be moved to help and pray for their well-being, whatever.
Unfortunately, the Ukrainian displacement causes problems because there are Ukrainian Jews that are coming to Israel, which causes the Palestinians to lose their land because they're being forced off. And then on our southern border, the Ukrainians are more or less being accepted. But the people from South America or Latin America, they've got to wait forever and ever and ever in order to come in.
You're talking about the United States?
Yes.
But I'm not sure if in the southern border, though, the Ukrainians are being, there are a few who are allowed to enter, but many are are not allowed to enter the United States, even on our southern border, Ukrainians.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, so it is a problem. I mean, we will accept, but we're not.
I haven't heard anything about our taking in Ukrainians. We're confused, are we?
There was one family that was admitted when a lawyer got involved in it.
We could go on.
It is one, it is interesting, though, that the liberation theology that we're, this has been talking about, developed in the Roman Catholic Church in Latin America. It was not accepted by the Catholic Church, nor has it been accepted by many within the Protestant Church. That that whole understanding of that liberation that Christ has done. So, you know, it's it's interesting that it's not quite as clear, even though it's presented as one of the theories, theories, ideas. It totally isn't accepted.
But it's it does seem fully rooted, though.
Yeah, I think I really.
Okay, let's post some prayers. Heavenly Father, we praise you for the freedom that we couldn't secure on our own. As we strive to live closely in your presence, help us to embrace that freedom and continually celebrate what you have done in Jesus's name.